The Committee of the Hall is in order. And with I'd like to welcome members of the body. Now, obviously, these past several weeks, there has been many issues that have been addressed this body in regards to Bill Number 74, which was presented by the administration to the legislature. And we also fully understand that with Bill 74, there has been a very dynamic set of events that are occurring around the community as a result of the financial situation of the government of Guam and some of the more recent developments where Standard and Poorers and the rating agencies have placed Guam in a credit watch. And with that, of course, the movement of Bill Number 74. And it's obvious to many of the -- to members of this body and some with a heck of a lot more experience than me, that in the normal course of events, when a budget bill is presented by the chief executive to the legislature, it is a process. And within that process, there is a scheduling of public hearings for all agencies and programs that deal with the appropriations for a budget act over many -- actually, over many months. And with that, we move on to budget session. And in budget session, again, the members of the body resolve through the Committee of the Hall to deal with the particulars on the bill that has been presented to us, as well as to act on the issues that also had been brought up on the public hearings. Obviously, we are in a situation, an expedited situation, where we have a bill, a budget bill, that has been presented to us halfway through the fiscal year. And again, many of the activities and many of the issues that have been addressed in this particular bill have not had a public hearing. If it were a perfect time and a perfect date and a perfect set of circumstances, I would love to have had a public hearing on every action of this body. But again, we are in some uncommon times. There have been, and I'm sure every one of my colleagues have also been receiving messages from the community in regards to some of the issues that have been brought forth on Bill Number 74 and some of the amendments that have been acted upon. And with that, obviously, in the issues such as revenue generation, on issues such as in fees for services, as well as changes in policies towards certain tax policy, it has been, again, a very, very dynamic period. And with that, the Chair has received request that individuals or groups to be affected by these changes, an opportunity to dialogue with the body. And with that, I'm allowing for members of the -- let me complete, then I will allow for the Senate to --
I have a point of inquiry.
I'm allowing for that dialogue to occur. And with that, I'd like to welcome to the body individuals, I'll start from the right side and we'll work our way left, so they can all introduce themselves to the members of the body. And then I will allow for Senator Rispio to speak. So, again, if you could please introduce yourself.
Thank you, sir. Is that on? Hello. My name's Steve Ruder. And I'm here this afternoon, actually wearing a couple of hats. One is as the Chairman of the Guam Chamber of Commerce, but I think it's also important to note that I'm a relatively new small business owner and entrepreneur on the island here. I've actually -- okay, thank you. Thank you.
I am Mary Torre, the President of the Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association.
John Lim Tia Koo, I'm representing Pacific Trucking and Paradise Limousines.
Hi, I'm Liz Duennius, and I'm with RE/MAX Diamond Realty.
I'm Ed Cruz with Cruz Equipping Company.
Again, and again, what I would like to do is move forward, allow the opportunity for these individuals to make statements, as well as to entertain any questions from the body. But with that, I'd like to first start out with Senator Rory Rispio. Senator Rispio.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, before we even begin to entertain the idea of allowing the individuals to speak before the legislature and even begin to dissect whether or not doing that at this juncture is appropriate to the current legislative process and what the standing rules provide, I want to ask you, Mr. Chairman, if you would please update the legislature as to where we're at with Bill 74. I understand through, only through the media, that first, we were supposed to vote on this bill last week, and then there was another commitment that we might vote on this by Wednesday. And then this morning, you mentioned that it might be possible we might be voting on this bill today. The very fact that you're willing to bring these individuals in speaks to how defective this current budget process has been for the last seven weeks. We believe that these should have been done in a public hearing format, as opposed to having them come in when the bill is supposedly being engrossed and we're still on the miscellaneous provision, and we're supposed to be offering up some more amendments to Bill 74 relative to the budgetary process. We seem to be doing things very differently, but I'm getting to have, in my own sense, that this seems to be the norm. We determined the expenditures before we determined their revenue, and now we're burdening these individuals. Obviously, they have very busy schedules. We're asking them to come in at a process where we're already in the Committee of the Hall. These individuals should be talking, expressing their concerns about all these proposed fee increases that the administration has proposed in a very public hearing fashion, where not only them, but members of the entire community can come in and express their concerns. I agree with every single one of your panel members that this should have gone through a public hearing process. Mr. Chairman, you did this to us when the issue of the minimum wage was brought before the legislature. You had all these individuals come in one by one and let the legislature know for or against what the impact would be. And now, we're doing that same thing at a time when we're supposed to be revisiting the whole fiscal year 2007 budgetary process. So, I take exception to your comment that this is unusual. It seems to be, Mr. Chairman, that this is rather usual in the Republican legislative leadership. And I ask that you reconsider the idea of even allowing these individuals to speak to the legislature at this time. This really should be done in a public hearing process. And I'm not the only member of the legislature that feels very strongly about how all these proposed fee increases are going to be implemented without letting the people know who are going to be impacted most, without even giving them an opportunity. We're going to hear from the business community, but how about the common man out there? How about Tan Maria Antunose, who is now going to be faced with all these fee increases? Why aren't they given the same opportunity to come and present their concerns to the legislature? So, I ask that you really reconsider what you're doing here and the precedents that you'd be establishing and the fact that you're not, as Chairman, and by allowing this, you're not going to protect the very sanctity of this hollowed halls. And so, I have no objections to the individuals as individuals, but I don't think it's appropriate that they be addressing the legislature at this time. And maybe we do this through a public hearing, but really, Mr. Chairman, I'm asking you on behalf of other members of the legislature to reconsider what you're really doing here and the kind of precedence you'd be setting today if you allow this to continue. So, I object to the idea of having anyone testify while we're at this point of the process to discuss Bill 74.
Okay. Thank you very, thank you very much, Senator Rispio. And I understand, you know, these are very difficult times. And for me, as a Chair, I'm making decisions based what I feel is in the best interest of the Committee, of the legislature, and the government of Guam, as well as the people of Guam. We are in unusual times because, again, the first time, this is the first time I can recall as a Senator that a budget bill has been sent to me, as Finance Chair at least, halfway through the fiscal year and in need for revisions for a fiscal year budget. And again, there's some other colleagues that have been here longer than me, but again, in the opinion of this Chair, we are in very unique times. And at the same time, I understand as well, some of these folks wanted to come up and speak, and I will not turn down if Tan Maria or Tan Jose is, can come up here to speak on the issue, on whether it's fees or licenses. I, as Chairman, will not turn them down as well and allow them the opportunity to speak. And again, as much as I would like to have a public hearing, we are in a very strange set of circumstances right now. We're having to deal with a revised budget, and we are now, geez, more than halfway through the fiscal year. But thank you for your comments and your recommendations, Senator Rispio. Senator Pangolinan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I just want to rise to a point of order. These individuals are very much welcome to express their opinion, but the legislature, I think, has a set of rules so that we can govern and ensure fair and open access for every single individual in our community. It really is not fair that certain individuals, because of their advocacy, get an avenue that is not available to other members of our community. It really should be fair, open, and honest and transparent. The point of order I rise, Mr. Speaker, to is a section of our standing rules, 12.01.01, says no advocacy. It says, "No member, except a member of Elhes La Turanguahan, shall advocate or oppose the passage of any bill or resolution on the floor of the Legislature's chamber while the legislature is in session." And it really is so that the members of the body, while legislation is on the floor, there's a presumption that the discussion had taken place in the past, that other members, all members of our community, have been given that opportunity to express their opinion and concerns regarding pieces of legislation that finally get on the floor, which is where we're at today. And that's really what that is meant to do. Now, obviously, if we allow the members of this to advocate for the passage of a bill while we're in session in this process, we are breaking our own rules. And really, it's one of the most sanctimonious rules. It's so that the legislature can deliberate without undue pressure. Again, the assumption is that they have been given an opportunity to the regular process. We have been in this session hall for almost six weeks now. The fee schedule was presented to us almost three weeks ago, and we've deliberated on them every day. And every time a new fee schedule or a new department comes in to advocate for that fee schedule, we have asked, "Why haven't we had a public hearing? Let's hold a public hearing." And really, that's what we need to do. So, Mr. Chair, rather, rising to that point of order, I think that the ruling has to be from the Chair, that we would be violating that rule and that this is not a proper process. To ensure that we actually begin the process of receiving public input, everyone interested, I'm going to make a motion that this legislature refer Bill 74 back to committee. The committee conduct public hearings or roundtable discussion within the next three to five days or however long we want to take. We already know that we've been in here six weeks, and the world's not going to come crushing down and rushing down because we've been here for that long. We can afford to be out in the public, in a public hearing process or a roundtable process, whatever forum is most convenient for the people of Guam, to have an opportunity, all of them, to express their concerns to this body, that we go into that process. So, my motion, Mr. Chair, is for this Legislative Committee on a whole to temporarily rise to refer Bill 74 back to committee, for the committee to hold public hearings and round or roundtable discussions on the proposed fee increases contained in Bill 74. That's my motion, Mr. Chair.
Just an amendment to that amendment, Speaker Ben, to also, Bill 74 as amended, with all the current amendments taking place in the last six or seven weeks. So, it's Bill 74 as amended by the Committee of the Hall.
Again, the Chairman, we are now in a particular portion of the bill where the Chairman is allowing members of the community to make a presentation.
Mr. Chair, there's a motion on the floor. There's a motion on the floor. We need to dispose of the motion.
I'm going to call for a one-minute recess. The Committee of the Hall is back in order. On the motion by Senator Pangolinan, Speaker Senator Mark Forbes.
I understand, Mr. Chairman, the purpose of the motion. But I honestly think that in the grand scheme of things, we've gotten a little past that. I think it's clear that we understand what we're doing here today, and we relate it to a similar experience we had in the last legislature.
Mr. Point of order, Mr. Chair.
I'm speaking on the motion.
No, there's a motion, no, it's a procedural motion. There's no debate or discussion on a procedural motion.
All right, then I object.
There's an objection. Let's go for the vote.
There's been an objection.
We seem to be in a mood to stifle discussion all of a sudden, but I'll object.
Okay, on the motion, there's been an objection. All those in favor, the motion?
Can you restate the motion, Mr. Chair?
The motion is to refer Bill 74.
For the committee to temporarily rise.
To temporarily rise.
Temporarily rise.
To temporarily rise and to refer it back to committee for hearing.
For a public hearing or roundtable discussions.
Okay, on the motion, there's been an objection. All those in favor? Okay, motion fails.
Mr. Chairman, can we take a roll call?
There is no roll call.
There's no roll call. Mr. Chair, you still need to rule on my other point of order, Mr. Chair?
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chair, the point of order I had is Section 12.01.01 of the standing rules say no advocacy. It says, "No person, except a member of Elhes La Turanguahan, shall advocate or oppose the passage of any bill or resolution on the floor of the Legislative Chamber while Elhes La Turra is in session." And that's why I will call for a brief recess. We convene at the public hearing room, and we will begin discussion and receiving the input of these individuals. I'm not saying that they can't speak, but I don't think, according to our rules, it's proper to do it during session. So, I would suggest to the Chair that we briefly recess, we retire to the public hearing room, and listen to these individuals in accordance with our rules.
On the motion, procedural or not?
On the motion, Senator Speaker Forbes.
I would not have an objection to that motion if, rather than retire to the public hearing room, we continued the discussion here. And that is not without precedent, as the mover is well aware, the session hall is used frequently as a public hearing room when we have multiple public hearings. So, the ability to use this room as a public hearing room is well-established. I also want to point out that when we were dealing with the minimum wage law, we did exactly this, so.
And I guess I wasn't here to object to that procedure.
No, but many of your colleagues were, so.
Yes, I understand. So, Mr. Chair, then that's fine.
I have no objection, provided that we temporarily rise and we come right back and that we stay right where we are, because it is unnecessary for us to drag everyone up, move them to the room next door, when this room is used weekly for public hearings.
So, I would then formalize my motion, Mr. Chair, that the Committee of the Hall recess and that the Chair then decides what he wants to do during the recess.
Ms. Chairman, and, yes, Speaker Forbes.
I would like to also amend that motion to take the entire record of the testimonies given at the public hearing and attach it to the journal so that it is part of these deliberations.
Ms. Chairman, we're going to take a minute recess.
There is no public hearing, Mr. Chair.
That the rule is misapplied. This rule, the no advocacy rule, is intended to prevent individuals who, by their nature, or who have been granted specifically during session, privilege of the floor, from using the privilege of the floor to walk around and influence individual senators and advocate. The purpose of this rule is to ensure that, as we often do, as you are aware, Mr. Chairman, when we have ex-senators who walk into the hall while we're in session, to ensure that they don't walk up and start advocating positions. It is not intended to prevent Committees of the Hall. And if you really think about it, Mr. Chairman, if we were to apply the interpretation supplied by the mover of this amendment, we could never have Committee of the Hall ever again.
Are we in session, Mr. Chair, or are we just in a discussion?
We are in session.
I am discussing.
How did you do, we were in recess. How did you convene session?
We came out of recess, Senator Pangolinan.
Please continue, Speaker Forbes.
Thank you very much. If we were to apply the interpretation of the rule made by the mover of this amendment, then we could never have Committee of the Hall again. Because if you think about it, what has every administration representative who's been up there for the past five weeks been doing? Advocating the proposal of the governor. Are we saying now that when we bring in directors, when we bring in representatives of the administration, when we bring in our friends from Rev and Tax, when we bring in the Attorney General and she says, "I can't take this cut. I need my budget restored," when we have budget session, Mr. Speaker, as we will very shortly on the 2008 budget, and we bring in the departments and agencies, we can't have anybody say, "We'd like you to change this provision in the budget"? I mean, if this application is stand, it shuts the legislature down.
No, it does not, Mr. Chair.
This rule is misapplied by the mover. It was written by this legislature.
Point of information, Mr. Chair, point of information.
I am speaking.
I know, but I am --
Speaker, when the two minutes is over, you may speak if you wish.
What are we discussing?
This rule is being misapplied. It is intended to do something entirely different than the mover claims. And for that reason, I oppose the motion and I will object, because I will always object if the rules are being perverted to prevent the people of Guam from speaking.
On the motion, there has been an objection.
Hold on, Mr. Chair, what's the motion?
The motion was to, Senator, was your motion?
You said no motion. I'm confused.
There's an objection to the motion to recess and to rise from the Committee of the Hall.
Who made the motion to recess? We already are in recess. So, was there a motion?
Now, on the --
No, that motion failed.
There has been.
The motion to rise failed, then my other motion was for the committee to recess.
There has been an objection on the motion. Can I see a show of hands?
No, point of order, Mr. Chair. We need some order here. The, I'm just confused, because I made the motion to rise to refer the bill back to committee for the purpose of holding public hearings and receiving public input. We took a vote, it failed. Okay, so that motion's over and done with. Then I made a motion to recess so that we can, you know, and receive public input outside of the session. That passed, and I thought that's --
The Chairman took a, the Chairman took a one-minute recess. Please continue.
Your motion is to recess. Your motion to recess is not passed.
The Chairman took a one-minute recess.
Right.
So, continue.
Now, the discussion on the advocacy, the reason why the administration are in here is they're not advocating for a private interest. They're advocating the policy of the administration. So, it's a huge difference.
What does it say then in the rule?
I'm just saying that that's what it is. That's just, that's all I'm saying, Mr. Chair. We all know what it is for.
Thank you very much.
So, my motion, so, are we discussing my motion to recess?
Actually, there has been an objection to your motion to recess.
To recess so that we can receive public input outside of legislative session.
And with that motion, there has been objection. All those, Senator Palacios. Senator Palacios.
I'd like to speak on the motion. The presence on a roundtable during committee as a whole by members of the government agencies are at the invitation of this legislature. And they are not private individuals appearing before this legislature during session to advocate a certain interest or a certain benefit for a certain group. They're actually presenting to us at our request, for the benefit of the people of Guam, clarity as to what issues we want to know. And that is the difference between the appearance of a government official, the request of this legislature, and the appearance of the parties before us now at their request to this legislature. And there's a difference. And I continue to see the advocacy as whether you're standing up and you advocate with individual senators, as you sit there and present it to the fifteen of us, the end result is the same. It is the influencing of a decision. And that, I think, the standing rule provides for that, so that we can be alone. This is, this is, the ball is in our court right now. And I'm ready to proceed without the input of the parties before us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Okay, on the amendment, there's been an objection. All those in favor of the amendment? The amendment to recess by Senator Pangolinan. The motion, excuse me, a motion, did I say amendment? There has been a motion to recess by Senator Pangolinan. All those in favor? Okay, motion fails. Again, it is of the opinion of the Chairman that the proceedings are in order and I'll allow with the continuation based on, okay, so again, we shall continue on.
Just a point of information. Point of information. Yes, absolutely.
Okay, please, continue.
My information, Mr. Chair, is that I disagree with the Chair's ruling. I will not participate in this session. I will be outside the hearing room to listen to the presenters.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolinan. And with that, I would like to, again, allow for these individuals to speak first, and then allow for, again, from the same we have been proceeding in the past, these proceedings and allowing for questions from the members of the body. But first, I would like to allow for Mr. Ruder to make an opening statement. Senator Palacios, you're recognized.
I also, I request to be excused from this session, that I might be influenced in one way or another. I mean, I want to be excused from the presentation of the parties before us. If I may be excused, I would like to be excused.
It is the, again, it is the Chairman's prerogative that the proceedings are in order.
I understand, I understand, but I just want to be excused.
With that, with that, no senator, if any one senator is unwilling or ready to ask questions or to make comments, that is the prerogative to the senator.
Point of information, Mr. Chair? Ms. Chair, I'd like, I'd like --
Tell you what, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to ask you folks here, the members of the body, to allow the members of this panel to make a presentation.
I'd just like to inform the body that I also don't want to participate. In all my years as a staff of the legislature and a senator myself, I've never seen anything like this, Mr. Chairman. It's a very back, awkward way of doing things, and I don't want to participate in this proceedings.
If it is the wish of the senator to not participate in regards to statements made by members of the community in dealing with issues, then that is their prerogative. Thank you very much, Senator Rispio. Senator Guthers.
Mr. Chairman, this is my concern. These are very fine people. They represent businesses and various organizations, which is fine. My problem is, there has been no public notice that this event was going to occur this afternoon so that others who may wish to have the same privilege could participate. Because of a lack of public notice that the special session was going to be held, I do not want to participate unless it's open to everybody. So, I will withdraw myself as well.
Thank you very much, Senator Guthers. I will remind you that if anyone that is interested in presenting testimony here today to this body, I will, as Chairman, allow that individual, and whether it is Tun Jose or Tan Maria or someone from Jigu or someone from Malesu or someone from Tumuning, allow the Chairman to speak. Obviously, there has been a bill that has been presented to us. It was a situation where, in the normal course of events, a budget bill will go through many, many months of hearings, and there would be months also of debate in session. We are in very uncommon and natural times. And with that, there is obviously many amendments that have come, not only in this particular budget bill that is coming about halfway through a fiscal year, but Senator, again, I've been through many budget bills, there have been many actions of this body that have occurred with amendments that without the opportunity for public hearing. And so, with that, I understand. And with that, the Chairman will also, again, invite all members of the body to participate. But if it is the wish of that member of the body to not request any information, to not add input, to not hear statements by individuals from the committee, that is your prerogative. So, thank you very much, Senator Guthers. Senator Munia Barnes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Though I appreciate the folks who are here with us this afternoon, Mr. Chairman, I really would have to share in the disappointment of the presentation that is before us this afternoon.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think any of these speeches are in order.
Wait, wait. Mr. Chair, you've given the opportunity for the others to speak, and I'm only wanting to share my same concern based on the standing rules that are before us and knowing that, yes, if we are going to give the community or the business community the chance to speak, then I just need to know, if we talk about giving the opportunity for people to speak, you could have gone out in public media to make a presentation, even to us, to say, "There is going to be a presentation this afternoon." Mr. Chair, that was not afforded to us. Excuse me, give me a second.
Senator Munia Barnes, you're out of order.
I can't believe this is happening, Mr. Chair.
You request Senator Munia Barnes.
I am just asking for a point of information. I am just asking for a point of information based...
Senator Munia Barnes, you're out of order.
Mr. Chair, just a point of information based on the information that wasn't given to me this afternoon.
We are going to take a one-minute recess. We are out of order.
I believe that, Mr. Chairman, you are about to begin this process. Are these the only people that be testifying, or are there others?
Actually, I'm going to allow for the representatives to speak here from the community. These are representatives of the community. I had no idea that these individuals were not living, breathing members of the community.
Well, Mr. Chair, if you would permit me, I would like to say that.
Sure.
I'm looking up there, and I'm seeing John Lintiako. Best as I know, Mr. Lintiako is Chamorro. And I think I have some knowledge of his background, so I can say that with some degree of certitude. His father is from Guam. His mother's from Guam. Certainly, he is a person of some accomplishment. I don't know that that accomplishment suddenly removes him from being part of the people of Guam. Ms. Duaneus, who is sitting next to Mr. Lintiako, is someone I know very well as well. She's definitely descended from a long line of Chamorro ancestors in Guam. She has distinguished herself in private endeavor, but I believe she's very much part of the people of Guam. Right next to Ms. Duaneus is somebody I don't think we can even dispute for one second, is definitely part of the people of Guam. And I just don't want the emotions of this moment to get so far out of hand that we start deciding whether people are part of the people of Guam based on where they're employed. I think that is a very dangerous thing. And if people start to feel that in order to be part of the people of Guam, you can't be Johnny Boy, sorry Johnny, but you're always Johnny Boy to me, to be part of the people of Guam, you can't be one of the folks sitting up there, I think if that happens, that's a dangerous thing. And I'm not referencing this to the, any comments made by the gentleman who just returned to the room.
Mr. Chair, if, if, if it would help, I'll come back in this so that we can hear the people talk instead of each other.
Can I finish my statement?
If we just get to them to talk, I'll be sitting in the room.
Can I finish my statement, please?
Please, if you can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
None of this is reference to the gentleman who just entered the room. It is reference to a parting shot I heard about if you're going to invite them, you should invite the people of Guam. I think they're part of the people of Guam. And I have no objection. In fact, I look forward to hearing testimony from people from all walks of life, because the one thing I believe in is that, to the greatest extent possible, you need to have input. And the chair put it perfectly. Because of the conditions upon which this bill was sent to us, many things that are contained in here have not had public hearing. They have not had the opportunity for any input. Over the past five weeks, they have had the input of the administration, who has advocated heavily for lots of these things, notwithstanding the misinterpretation of the standing rule that has been misapplied. This standing rule is not intended to prevent the people of Guam from speaking. It's intended to permit it. And I kind of am bothered by the notion that because Liz works for her money one way, she's suddenly a special interest. You know what? Most of the people of Guam work in the private sector, Chamorro, Filipino, all kinds of folks. They're not a special interest, they're the majority of the people. And just like my good friends and colleagues who work for the government of Guam, and those who work for the federal government, who are of our people, we all have the same rights regardless of who our employers are. All of us do. And Steve sitting there, bro, you and I both have the, you know, the oppa ka, we have the oppa ka thing happening, although I think I have blue eyes and you don't, and you got hair and I don't. And yes, I have Chamorro blood in me, and Steve, unless you've been holding out, I don't think you do either. I don't think you do. But, you know, you might be white, but you've been here a long time, and as far as I'm concerned, Steve, you're part of the people of Guam. And I want to hear from everybody. And I don't know, frankly, Mr. Chair, what all the fuss is about. Why can't we hear from people? Why is that a bad thing? Is it a bad thing that Liz has an opinion? I might not agree. In fact, odds are, I probably won't agree. I'll tell you what, Johnny there, he and I disagree about all kinds of things all the time, because that's the way family can be. But I still want to hear it. It may not change my vote at all on these fees. I might decide the fees are fair as is, but I still want to hear it. And I don't understand why this goal line stand has been made on the simple issue of allowing people to speak. Yes, it's not, you know, normally this would be handled either through a public hearing in bill form, or, since these are fees, it could have been handled through a public hearing through the AAA process. But the AAA process was never pursued with these fees, and this bill did not come to us as a standalone bill, and it was presented to us as an emergency bill. And so I think if we're going to make a mistake, you want to make a mistake on the side of public input. You want to make a mistake on the side of democratic process. You want to make a mistake on the side of people getting to talk. You don't want to make a mistake on the side of shutting people up. And Mr. Ruder may be the chamber president, that doesn't mean he doesn't have a right to talk. Everyone else up there has the right to talk. All of us have the right to talk. Thank you. And I'm looking forward to hearing the testimony.
Thank you very much, Speaker Forbes. And this without, I'll allow, I'm going to start to my right, so I'm going to allow Mr. Steve Ruder to make some opening comments.
Thank you, Senator, Vice Speaker Calvo. Can everybody hear me? Those that are in the room, or perhaps those in the public hearing room as well. Again, my name is Steve Ruder, and I'm the chairman of the board of the Guam Chamber of Commerce, and small business sole proprietor. I've lived on Guam for nearly twenty years and truly consider it home, and thank everybody for making me feel at home. I understand that certain processes and procedures are required, but I certainly appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of the three hundred and thirty-plus members of the Guam Chamber of Commerce, representing over thirty thousand private sector employees. These continue to be challenging times for the government of Guam, and again, I want to say I appreciate all the hard work that the legislative body has been engaged with, particularly over the last several weeks. I've made several trips down here over the last several weeks. Sometimes, late at night, I've been lurking around outside, not necessarily making my presence known, but one thing I wanted to let the body know is that there's some very real concern, not just on behalf of a small business person who happens to represent the Guam Chamber of Commerce, but many, many, literally thousands of people in the community who are concerned about the direction of Guam. And if I may, just spend a few minutes giving some thoughts and perhaps some ideas on things to consider when engaging in the discussion on Bill seventy-four. There's an opportunity now, I think, and we think, for the government of Guam to take measured steps to truly change. We're at a crossroads. There's a lot of opportunity before the people of Guam, and we're at a crossroads, and I'm here to advocate a certain path, and that's a path of changed. We've been dismayed of late that a lot of the initiatives that have been discussed continue to focus on increasing fees and taxes, and not necessarily first to take a look at the restructure of Gov Guam. The proposed changes in Bill seventy-four not only serve to support the status quo, we feel they penalize not just the business community, but the entire community. One of the things that we advocate down at the Guam Chamber of Commerce is what's good for the community is good for business. And we take that to heart. We think that the bill in its current form will only increase the cost of living to the general public. The business community, its employees, have continued to cut expenses while reorganizing themselves, consolidating duties and responsibilities, and merging precious resources. We're working hard to grow the tax base, which frankly is the only real source of revenue for the government of Guam. We think the only true way to grow government revenues is to grow the private sector. And again, I'm here to advocate a strong and healthy and vibrant community, supported by a strong and healthy and vibrant private sector. It's increasingly difficult to grow the private sector when the community resources lack skill and talented personnel. I think this is an important point to the body, because there's been a lot of discussion around town, in the media, about what to do with people that may perhaps be displaced. Well, I think there's opportunities right now in the private sector to absorb those with marketable skills and talents. I don't have a list in front of me this afternoon, but I think there's a couple of noteworthy issues that we should point out. One of them is the hard work that the Guam Contractors Association, through the GCA Trades Academy, private sector companies, employees, putting in their hard-earned money to develop a trades academy, so we can work with not just our youth, but all the people of Guam, to develop a marketable trade skills program. And they're looking for students. The Guam Chamber of Commerce has a scholarship fund in excess of thirty thousand dollars that today the public can access and gain a scholarship to the GCA Trades Academy. I think that's a great opportunity for somebody who's looking for work. My point is that there is a net there, and the private sector is willing to work with our folks to find work and to be productive. The chamber has publicly announced in regards to the fees that we don't oppose fee increases so long as there's full disclosure as to what the fee increases are for. We need reassurance that any increases in fees actually go to pay the specific cost of the government service provided and not disappear into the general fund, as has been stated in the media. Services that are subject to government fees could possibly be increased without affecting the livelihood of our citizens and help the government recover costs. You guys have all talked about them, things like driver's license fees and business license fees and bus fares. We're certainly, again, not opposed to that. However, we're strongly opposed to most of the fees, fee adjustments proposed by the administration, as they have no rational nexus, in our opinion, as to how much it costs the government to provide the services the fees are intended for. To us, it only makes sense to rationally justify the increases and not simply make the reason we need to increase fees because the general fund is short. We're therefore asking the Guam Legislature to assure the community that any and all fee increases are justified, and we would appreciate the opportunity for discourse in that regard. We also ask that fees are fair and equitable for all. For instance, fees currently assessed, the banking sector for ATMs, branches, and licenses could and should also be paid by credit unions and other financial institutions. So, we strongly urge that this be considered when the fee structure is being considered or included in the legislation. One that's near and dear to my heart is the reduction in the threshold for the Dave J. Santos Act from five hundred thousand dollars a year to fifty thousand dollars, and the reduction of the exemption from the first fifty to forty thousand dollars. This takes away valuable monetary resources from many small businesses struggling to survive, and I'm one of those people. That takes two thousand dollars out of my pocket, and I would love to spend that on buying supplies that I desperately need, buying a new desk or a new chair for the part-time employee that I've been able to hire recently as we've worked to try to organically grow a local business. So, your appreciation or consideration of taking another hard look at the Dave J. Santos Act and its part in the bill would be sincerely appreciated. Most small business owners work six or seven day a week, long hours. We shouldn't expect, as a community, the incubators for tomorrow's economy to bear the additional burden when the consumer of taxes, the government, isn't firsthand making On behalf of Guam's small businesses, we strongly urge the Guam Legislature to vote against any and all amendments to the Dave J. Santos Small Business Enhancement Act. We firmly believe that the government of Guam can increase its gross receipts tax revenue by fully enforcing compliance with the current law. The decision to increase the tax burden on law-abiding small businesses while ignoring the enforcement of compliance by all businesses is simply an unfair proposition. I've enclosed with the thoughts, this was a letter to the body, further ideas that we've been advocating to this body and to the administration for the better part of the last four and a half years. And there's some solid ideas in there. There's a lot of people that put a lot of time into those ideas, and that goes beyond the discussion on the budget bill. But to the extent that we can continue to play a role and to work together with our brothers and sisters in the legislature and the administration, we're really happy to do that and look forward to the opportunity. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak here this afternoon and look forward to answering any questions or receiving comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ruder. Speaker Forbes?
Yeah, Steve, thanks for your testimony. And I would like to ask a couple of questions of you, since you did bring up some very specific things. First, as you made a strong pitch that the legislature should not in any way touch the Dave Santos exemption, how many years has it been up at five hundred thousand bucks?
I can't answer that specifically.
Isn't it about four or five years?
At least.
Yeah. Prior to that, it was at fifty, right?
That was the original threshold.
And actually, it was fifty for a number of years before Senator Casbar moved it up to five hundred grand, if memory serves. Prior to the Dave Santos amendment passing in the first place, GRT was applied across the board regardless if the company made twenty bucks in receipts or two million in receipts. And that's been the way it's been for most of the history of Guam, right? I just want to put in perspective the fact that if the legislature were to recalculate the Dave Santos exemption, we would not be, if we were to approve that, doing something unprecedented. In fact, taking a look at the entire business history of Guam, the dominant precedent is that everybody pays the tax. And I'm not advocating that, I'm just saying that the whole Dave Santos exemption is a relatively recent phenomenon in the course of broad events. And the increase to five hundred thousand is even more recent. And when the idea was first formulated way back when, the thought, as I remember it, was that it'd be something of an incubator provision, that it wasn't intended to be necessarily a lifelong tax exemption, that the theory was that when a business, a small business, was first starting out, and it was in that first year or so of struggling to establish itself, that the Dave Santos exemption was intended to give them a leg up. But it wasn't intended to permanently give a tax break to businesses that had gross receipts of less than five hundred thousand dollars a year. You know, there's also been statements made by the Department of Revenue and Taxation and other officials that one of the difficulties with the current configuration of the Dave Santos exemption is that it encourages the establishment of subsidiaries. That if you are in fact an enterprise that has gross receipts in excess of, let's say, a million dollars, and there is a convenient way for you to establish three subsidiaries and split the receipts equally, that the result is you wind up paying no GRT whatsoever, as opposed to if you were the single... opposed to if you were the single business entity, you'd be paying GRT on everything over 500 grand. Do you have any indication that this is in fact a practice that occurs?
I've asked several colleagues and people in the business community, and I appreciate and understand the concern, but I firsthand am not aware of that practice occurring. It may, and to the extent that as a body, the Guam Chamber of Commerce could work with the business community to ensure that that doesn't happen, we're happy to do that. The idea is that the act is, as you said, an incubator. It's a way to create an opportunity for somebody, an entrepreneur, to start a new business, to grow that business, to add employees, to contribute to the community, to contribute to the tax base of the community. And wearing both hats, personally, I think that whacking it back to the threshold of $50,000 and taxable on the first 40 is quite dramatic and doesn't serve to plug the holes that the concern I believe that you're raising is...
Well, actually, it does because it arrives at a point of diminishing returns. It makes sense to switch a company to three subsidiaries if you can distribute 300,000, 400,000 dollars in gross receipts among three. If you had to do it 50,000 bucks a hit, it'd just be, you know, absurd. You'd wind up... So at least this is revenue taxes argument, is that if you take it down to 50, then the creation of subsidiaries is diminished because you just couldn't create that many subsidiaries. It'd just be a joke. But I'm not arguing that point either. I would like to ask, if we recognize that it's intended to be an incubator, do you honestly believe that you need incubation all the way up to 500,000 dollars in gross receipts? Or for your average... And I realize when we say "small business," we sometimes get into a problem of definitions. So if you don't mind, I'm going to use a local definition of "small business" as opposed to the national definition of "small business" because by that definition, virtually everyone in Guam is a small business. In terms of local small business, do you need that kind of incubation all the way to 500,000 dollars in gross receipts? Or are there actually quite a few businesses that are in that 500,000 dollar realm that probably will hang out in that 500, 600, 700,000 dollar realm for the duration of their business life?
I think that is worthy of exploration.
See, because the concern is...
I can't answer the question on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, but I think it's worth talking about, but...
See, the concern is if you have a large number of businesses out there that are basically designed to operate at 500,000 to 600,000 to 700,000 dollars in gross receipts a year that aren't ever going to be multimillion-dollar concerns, which I imagine, again, I'm no businessman, I'm no business expert or anything like that, but I imagine there's quite a few. And if that were the case, then the Dave Santos exemption winds up being a perpetual exemption from GRT, as opposed to a hand-up, you know, to get people going? I mean, was 500,000 the smart place to draw the line in the first place? Did we blow it? Should we have set it somewhere else? I mean, we do blow it, there's no doubt about that from time to time. So did we blow it there? Should we have set it somewhere else if our intent historically was to have this be an incubator, as opposed to a perpetual dispensation of tax?
Mr. Chairman, point of order. Mr. Chairman, it appears to be that there's not enough members in the session to constitute a quorum.
Continue.
I mean, it's one thing to allow for this kind of discussion to take place, but to have it take place when there's no quorum. Go ahead and count, there's only four members, including myself.
Continue.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, there's no quorum.
I'd like to go ahead and continue this line of...
You're going to continue absent a quorum?
Well, there are a lot of senators who did step out on their own volition.
Yeah, I think the point of order has been raised.
Yeah, but you still need eight members to constitute a quorum.
The point of order?
And members come and go, but unless some other member raises an absence of a quorum, the proceedings cannot continue.
Point of order's been raised. Just dispense with it.
I don't see eight people in the room, Mr. Chairman.
Well, what I'd like to do is go ahead, again, there are a lot of senators who did dismiss themselves from this, which broke the quorum.
And so we continue in this legislative proceeding absent a quorum?
And I would like to go ahead and entertain the people who have come up here to say something. Now, if the senators decide they don't want to hear what the speakers want to say, that's their own decision.
And so the Republican senators dismissed themselves also?
What I would like to do, Senator Espisho, I'd like to go ahead and entertain the speakers who are here, because they, again, this is just a matter of information and public input at this point in time.
And so you allow for discussion to continue absent a quorum?
Yeah, no, this is, they're out of order.
I'm out of order. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So to continue with the discussion, which Senator Espisho has no interest in participating in, do you think that 500,000 was the proper line, or do you think it should have been somewhere else? If you had to write the law, Steve, where would you put it? And I'm only putting you on the spot because you came out with a very strong statement that 500,000 is what it's got to be, so...
Excuse me. I'm pragmatic in my approach to business and most things in general, and I'd want to study it some more. My point is rolling it back at this time from 500, the threshold from 500,000 dollars to 50,000 dollars doesn't seem practical when we haven't, in my opinion, clearly demonstrated that we've explored other revenue-generating or cost-savings opportunities...
Let me ask you two final questions, Steve, and then I'll let you go. Would you be less concerned about it if the government of Guam demonstrated significant cuts to their operational costs?
Yes.
Okay. Would you, what would you consider to be a significant level of cuts? Would something in the neighborhood of 20 million dollars sound like a significant cut to you?
Yes.
Okay. Third and final question, would you be less upset if it was rolled back to a point somewhere between 50 and 500, but not kept at 500?
Yes.
All right, well, that's fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Forbes. At this time, at point in time, I'd like to invite Ms. Torre to perhaps go ahead and give her comments.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Speaker Forbes, Senator Espaldón, and Senator Blas. Thank you for having me speak. I am Mary Torre, the president of the Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the senators on behalf of, on behalf of our membership and our board of directors with regards to Bill Number 74. I too am local, born and raised here in Guam, although 15 years away, I'm back, and have been in various industries and continue to see some of the same challenges we see year to year, even decade from decade, with regards to some of our issues. I'm writing to, or I'm here on behalf of the organization because it continues to be evident that the challenges that we are faced with from year to year continues to grow, and the government of Guam currently is not facing those challenges, I think, with the right answers. Bill 74 only addresses the fees with, and not regarding some of the cutbacks that are necessary within the government, and not necessarily just furloughs with people, but maybe in services or in some of the products being offered. Some of the challenges, though, I believe, will not be addressed just in Bill 74. The Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association strongly opposes any increases in taxes without cost-cutting measures in place. Otherwise, the government of Guam will continue to face the same challenges year after year without any corrective action. The private sector continues to right-size to the market's demands and challenges, and the Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association is concerned about the principle and the processes that have taken place with regards to Bill 74, the fact that it has not had a public hearing on the fees, the fact that amendments continue to take place and new amendments are placed without any hearings, and without, and the fees aren't even tied back to where the services are going to be provided. Those are all concerning us, and I know that we've been here as well, same with Chamber of Commerce or with Steve, in being witness to some of those amendments being changed, but we still have yet to hear some of the corrective measures to support those changes. The Hotel, Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association strongly opposes the increase in annual services from any person who rents or leases hotels or motel rooms, primarily because we have noticed an inconsistency in the way that law, or with that, with the way the rate is being applied. There are inconsistencies with hotels, motels, there's also inconsistencies with flat rates at single units versus residential multiple units, as well as the warehouses. I think the hotels, motels should be separated from those types of services because, from the way I understand the bill being written, and from my discussion with revenue and taxation, that the fee being considered on a per-unit basis is primarily because of the way the properties are renting out spaces and they're not being taxed other than a flat rate. The hotel, motel should be separated from that, primarily because we are already experiencing an occupancy tax, which supports the tourism attraction fund. So in essence, we are already being taxed for that same service, for renting out the units. Businesses with residential or commercial rental units are not burdened with the same licensing or tax fees as hotels and motels because of the occupancy tax, therefore should be looked at separately. The GHRA also sees additional services and fees, which will obviously inflate the cost of doing business, that are also included in Bill 74 outside of the per-unit cost. And we know that that'll have a direct impact, not only to our businesses, but to the people that patronize our businesses, including the local military and the tourism communities. Other suggested tax increases within Bill 74 will undoubtedly affect the bottom line and be passed on to the consumer. The hotels and motels will also include, and also the restaurants will include liquor licenses, recreational amusement fees. All of the other fees included in Bill 74 will undoubtedly affect the businesses at large in the private sector. With this and with the increases in federal wages, the low visitor arrivals, and having to remain competitive with other destinations in an already competitive market, we adamantly oppose the annual service license fees for hotels and motels, more specifically in that Bill 74. We are in favor of change within the government, and we'd like to challenge the government of Guam to look at those areas that are not industry-specific, but they should increase in fees in certain areas. For example, business license fees should be increased in general from 50 to 500 dollars. I know that some of the business license, or the different businesses are further taxed depending on the type of service they provide, but some of the business licenses in general are not being increased. Also, property taxes and vehicle registrations, those are other areas that aren't being affected as much or at all, and those need to be looked at that are not industry-specific, but more as a general tax basis. All changes, though, should be tied back to how the fees will affect change within government, inclusive of cutting measures. And the government should also realize that any changes made this year will not always just address the issues next year or the year after if nothing is done with correcting the government. The GHRA advocates just legislation that is fair and protects the interests of the business community. We represent over 20,000 employees and their families, and Bill 74 is necessary for some reasons, but it needs input from the business community as these amendments have not been brought to the public for public hearing. We strongly encourage the legislature to hold public hearings, to hear those amendments, publish them as they are being revised, and to receive comments from the public before engrossing the bill, before passage for third reading, when we don't have any input or no debates or further amendments will be accepted. So at this time, we strongly encourage the legislature, again, to reconsider the amendments with regards to that and to consider the furloughs that are not being accepted at this time or any other cutbacks within government.
Thank you, Ms. Torre. Speaker Forbes?
Yeah, thank you very much for your testimony, Mary. I'm going to immediately zoom in on one thing because you are representing GHRA and you're probably the only hotel person up here. What I understand the case to be is that traditionally, for a long, long time, since the beginning of time, I guess, probably before you were born and when I was still young, hotels have always paid a fee for rental.
Correct, a flat rate.
Well, yeah, but the way I understand it's calculated is as follows. Currently, if you're going to rent one house and you apply for a license to rent out one house, then you're charged, I think it's 10 bucks for that fee, I think. Maybe 15, but I don't remember. If you have a duplex or anything larger than a duplex, it's $25 currently. So that means, Mary, that the license for rental that a hotel pays today is $25 a year, right?
Correct.
Now, are you guys arguing that it needs to stay at $25 until the end of time?
We're arguing that we, what the legislature needs to look at is having general business licenses increased for all businesses, regardless of industry.
I understand that point.
And we should be separated from residential or commercial properties.
So you don't want to pay any rental licensing fee at all?
Well, if there's a flat rate, what is that flat rate because, under a business license? Because we already have an occupancy tax.
That's my point. What you're arguing is you don't want to pay a rental fee at all.
We do it in the form of occupancy tax at 11%.
Now, let's talk about occupancy tax for a minute. The hotel occupancy tax was first passed shortly after the tourism industry began, right? It's had been at different rates, but it was basically...
Right.
And when it was first passed, what was the intended use of the hotel occupancy tax?
When the bond?
No, the first time.
I'm not aware of that, actually.
From the very beginning, the hotel occupancy tax has been primarily targeted at marketing tourism in Guam.
Oh, right, it supports the tourism attraction fund.
For example, it supports TAF. The TAF pays for the budget of GVB, including the promotional budget and things of that nature. Now, you're right, in good years, what's happened is that, and in bad years too, is that the TAF has also been used as a primary funding source for certain bonds. In some cases, it's been shady, but in terms of the application of that bond. But at least of late, the bonds that the TAF supports are primarily projects where?
Not necessarily. Some of it does go back into the general fund. They do, they do bring some of it back. I know that the GVB hasn't received the full amount, their allocation.
Yeah, I believe that there's problems throughout the government of Guam with allocations, and sometimes they're due to the fact that the GVB is, I mean, I'm sorry, the DOA is having a hard time getting money out. Sometimes it's because the Tourism Attraction Fund didn't bring in quite as much as was anticipated at the beginning of the fiscal year. But the specific question was the bonds that the Tourism Attraction Fund support are projects primarily where?
To support tourism.
Geographically.
Right.
They tend to be Tumon Bay projects, they tend to be road projects in Tumon Bay. I guess my point is, is that the TAF, which is supported by the hotel occupancy tax, at least in a major part, because I will agree with you that from time to time, the government of Guam has rated it, but at least in the general course of events, year after year after year, the bulk of the TAF supports the industry.
Whether or not it supports the industry, the fact is that we already taxed at a high rate.
I'm not saying it's a bad thing. You don't have to argue. I'm not saying it's a bad thing. I'm not saying it shouldn't.
But we shouldn't double tax. This is a new tax to put in, at first it was $50 per unit, now it's $5 per unit, you know, and you're already charging an occupancy tax for that specific room being used.
But you didn't have a problem with it when it was 25 bucks. Because that's what it is now. You pay 25 bucks a year. So you didn't have a problem with it when it was 25 bucks. So let's explore where you start to have a problem. Do you have a problem if it's 100 bucks?
There are inconsistencies within it. There are, like, right now, I believe warehouses are being charged 200 dollars for a flat rate. I don't have a number for you. The fact is that we already carry a huge burden as far as being taxed for, within our industry, and so it would be different if we weren't taxed another way. The fact is that we already are, and you're trying to double tax us for certain, or put a fee on top of the taxes.
You're already double taxed because you're already paying the 25 dollars, right?
Correct, but that's, that is a small amount as compared to what's being suggested.
So help me out here. If 25 is a small amount and is acceptable, and if 5 dollars a room, which, what's the average size of a hotel in Guam, number of rooms?
About 400.
So that's 400 rooms, that's $2,000. And $2,000 a year is too high. Got an idea of...
It's not the money, it's the principle, the fact.
Well, then why weren't you arguing when it was 25?
I agree with you. I think that once they had the Tourism Attraction Fund and the occupancy tax, they should have separated hotels from the service. separated hotels from the service taxes.
I just wanna be clear about what GHRA's position here is. So GHRA's position is that they don't think it should be charged a rental fee at all?
I don't think so because we already have the occupancy tax.
So you even want the twenty-five dollars you're currently paying to be stricken from the...
That's correct.
That's, that's the position of the board, you sure?
We agree. We already feel that we've been taxed this in a different level. We cannot be compared to the other industries within the island of Guam. We're already feeling that tax in a different way, and nobody else has a similar tax that's levied on them as, as the hospitality industry.
Of course, there isn't any industry in Guam that has a, a combination private sector and public sector effort to promote the industry on an annual basis either, is there?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Johnny's into transportation. I'm not aware of a Guam Transportation Promotion Bureau that promotes the transportation industry in Guam. Liz is into real estate. You still sell wine there, no more? Okay, she's into real estate. So I'm not aware of a Guam Real Estate Promotion Council that is funded by public funds to promote real estate development here. And I'm not criticizing, I'm just saying it's not like you don't get something for that.
Agreed, but everybody wins here through the tourism side. We are not the only benefactors from this.
No dispute there at all. I'm just saying that it's also not entirely a one-way street, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
You know, I asked Steve when Steve was talking about the Dave Santos exemption. You seem to have answered as, with respect to if there is a middle ground somewhere here that you would tolerate. I'm getting the impression there is no middle ground that you would tolerate, that's what I'm hearing.
The reason why is that we have not received anything with regards to the cost-cutting measures for the government.
That was the second question I was gonna ask. Now, if it became clear to you in the course of the next few days that the government of Guam was gonna undergo substantial budget cuts as part of this, would that temper your opposition a bit and maybe you'd go, oh, well, if they're gonna cut costs, then maybe we can afford two thousand dollars a year in a license fee. Might you do that?
I think depending on the information received back on the cost-cutting measures, we would consider...
Let's say it was twenty million dollars in cuts. Would that make you feel like, eh, if we're gonna get twenty million dollars in cuts to the Gov. Guam budget, well, then maybe we oughta go ahead and suck it up. What do you think? Is it possible? I'm not asking you to commit to it, I'm just saying...
It would depend on the information received because you also have to look at, you know, that's, I think that's the real problem here is that we're only looking at increasing fees, and now it's not just about cutbacks, it's how is the government gonna work to provide the services for the amount that's gonna be there? Whether or not you increase fees to make up the differential or to cut back, there's, there hasn't been a resolution to any of that or a clear plan of how that's going to be delivered. So I think that is where we need to go back to.
Okay, I'm a little bit lost. Are you talking about a plan for how to cut or a plan to how to deliver service after the cut?
For both. I think it's a mix of both. I think the government needs to look at both areas and not just a one-sided point of view.
No, I agree, I agree. So I'm saying when, when you start to see the cuts manifest themselves...
Right.
Is there a point where you look at those cuts that are manifesting themselves and go, well, maybe the government of Guam is doing a good faith effort to try and cut its costs?
Well, of course. I think we all have to be reasonable and we all have to work with each other. And I think in the past, Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Guam Hotel Restaurant Association, has offered our support and service in trying to assist the government with that. I know personally, we've had meetings with the governor as well to offer our support in those, some of those business ideas of where, I know Steve had mentioned some of the programs, and GHRA also has apprenticeship programs with Department of Labor and with the AHRD for displaced workers. So we certainly have areas to tap into, and it is going to be a good marriage of certain things, cost-cutting measures as well as increase in fees. Now, it's all relative to how much those are reasonable.
So, but, so guess what you're saying then, Mary, is that if you saw a good faith effort from the government of Guam, it would make you guys more amenable to changes in this area? Not necessarily what's being proposed by the governor in Bill 74, but you'd be more amenable to changes as a general principle?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Torrey. I'd like to go ahead and ask Mr. Limtiaco to give his testimony.
Thank you, Senator Espadon, Speaker Forbes, and all the other senators in and outside the session hall. My name's John Limtiaco. I represent Pacific Trucking and Paradise Limousines. We're a small family business. My job title is janitor, mechanic, driver, salesman, and manager. I guess I do whatever it takes to service my customer and get the job done. Whenever I see, or whenever I hear about increased taxes and increased fees, the first thing I think about is how do I remain competitive? And my options are increase my rates, decrease my pay and my employees' pay, and possibly even furlough some of my employees to do more with less. I guess what I'm trying to say is I do everything to try and stay as competitive as possible. If I could do this, if I could look at raising fees as well as cutting pay and possibly cutting workforce in a private business to remain competitive, I don't see why the government can't do as well. There's a lot of fees in these, in the proposed fees in Bill 74. Some of them are good. Some of them might need even to be raised a little bit more. But the point is, is there's no public input on this, and several of the fees have no basis. I can't understand where they came up with the fees in this bill. And what I think we need to do is, I think we need to pause, we need to get more public input. I'm not opposed to increasing fees. I think several fees have to be increased. But I think we have to look at every industry, look at the public, because the bottom line is, is if companies like small private businesses cannot cut their costs anymore, we're basically just gonna pass this along to the consumer. And pretty soon, we're gonna end up like Hawaii where it costs seven hundred thousand for an average home. When does it stop? When do we control our costs? For my particular industry, which is a transportation business, there's a huge increase in the cost to register vehicles. I'm not opposed to all of the increase in the registration fees, but the government is also charging for registration fees by weight of vehicles. And with heavy trucks, I mean, we have vehicles rated to pull two hundred thousand pounds or that comes to a hundred tons. The legal limit by law on Guam is a hundred and twenty thousand pounds. So why are we being billed in excess of the legal limit? So these, that's just one of the items that, you know, we need to take a look at. And, you know, raising transportation costs on Guam by forty percent is gonna directly impact the consumer. Everything's imported to Guam, and the only way it gets from the port to the stores is using trucks or transportation. And if there is an increase in forty percent, and that's our major cost, is our vehicles and our registration, if there's that size of an increase, it's gonna trickle down to the consumer, and it's just gonna increase, increase everything on this island. The other items that I wanna point out is also the licensing fee. I see we're going from a flat fee to an escalating fee on the, on retail licenses. I don't understand that. I think that the retail licensing fee should be a flat fee, the same for every business. We already pay GRT based on our sales, so why are we gonna pay another, another licensing fee based on ourselves? Let's, if the fee's too little, and I agree it's too little for a retail sales license, let's increase the flat fee, but let's not set up an escalating scale. We're already paying that in GRT. The more we make, the more we pay. And I don't think we need to do that twice. There's a hundred pages of these fees. We can't cover them all today. We need more time. We need more time to review the fees. We need more time to get industry feedback, and we need more time to get public feedback, and I think that we need to make that time available. I was looking, just another example in these fees is the alcohol beverage license fees. In my business as a limousine service provider, currently the alcohol licensing fee is a thousand dollars for a bar, a nightclub, which pushes through thousands of dollars of business in liquor sales. The fee for a limousine bus is a thousand dollars per year. We're not selling, we're not a bar, we're not pushing liquor, we're selling an experience. The Guam wedding market is one of the fastest-growing markets on Guam. The average time that a wedding couple spends in a limousine is fifteen minutes each way. How much beer and how much alcohol can you drink in fifteen minutes that justifies a thousand dollar license, alcohol licensing for limousines? We talked about expanding the Guam wedding market, but here we are sticking a fee of a thousand dollars for a limousine, per limousine, per year, the same as we charge for a nightclub. Clearly, there was no thought going into this bill, or maybe a little. Some of them are, some of the fees are okay, but for the most part, there is no input into this, this, these fees from the general public. It seems that we're just looking at how much we owe and how do we figure out how we, we increase fees to cover those costs? That's not gonna help. The more we spend or the more we make in revenue, generally the more we spend, so when does it end? All I'm asking from this legislature is that we take the time to review all these fees, and let's set realistic fees that will benefit the public as a whole. That's all I have to say. I welcome any questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Limtiaco. Speaker Forbes?
Johnny, I'll just ask you the same question I've been asking pretty much everybody. No, I ask you something a little bit different because you brought up a different angle. You feel that Rev and Tax didn't apply some kind of logic to the establishment of these fees?
I think on certain items they have. There's certain things that are justified in here. In fact, I think there's areas where they can increase the fees even more.
Okay.
But there's, there's a lot of it that I don't, I don't, I don't know where they come up with any of this information.
Would it be helpful if, if we ask the Department of Revenue and Taxation at some point here very quickly, because we can't stretch this out ad infinitum, but if we very quickly ask Rev and Tax to communicate in some fashion their justification for each of the fee increases, including some calculation of how it, how it's a cost recovery?
I think that would be fine, as long as there's an exchange of information on what their reason is, and, you know, as long as they also accept some of our feedback. I mean, that's, that's what we need to do. We need to discuss the fees. We just can't have one-side proposed fees and sign it into law without any public input.
I do agree with you that this, this whole thing is happening under unfortunate circumstances, it seems to impede the normal exchange that occurs between the public and the government when it comes to any of these things, because the conditions right now with them showing up in this bill as opposed to through the AAA process or through a normal bill that goes through a public hearing process has made that very difficult and very impossible, actually, in many ways. So I do agree with you that that exchange would be good. I don't know that this is a process that can be delayed for a long period of time, but I don't think that it's something we should do, you know, entirely blind to that either. So one of the things that maybe I'll do is talk to Rev and Tax about very quickly trying to initiate that kind of conversation, because maybe you all can, you know, the chamber and all the other folks that are interested in this might be able to help Rev and Tax in areas where maybe they blew it. And, and maybe they can share information that'll demonstrate how a particular fee which might not be, or fee increase that might not be very clear right now might in fact be a cost recovery and justify the cost recovery. You also made the statement, I think, that, just like other people have, that part of the skepticism is predicated on the notion that the government increases taxes, increases fees, increases the cost of service, but it hardly ever makes adjustments to its own expenditures. And, and there sometimes doesn't appear to be this connection between these increases and improved service. And I don't disagree with you on that either, Johnny. We all had the experience of a few years ago where the gross receipts tax was doubled basically, and, and that was done without input and without, without the benefit of public discourse. Thankfully, it was overturned. Let me ask you the same question I've asked everyone else. If you saw the government of Guam taking significant steps to reduce its expenditures through this mechanism, would it make you less dubious and less skeptical about increases in fees because you'd be seeing the government doing its share?
Like I said, Senator Forbes, I'm not totally opposed to increasing fees.
I understand.
I need to, but I think that there, there needs to be more cuts on the government.
Okay. And if the government did do that, then it would, it would make you feel better about the fees if you saw it?
Yes, yes. If I, if I see them cutting, you know, doing their part, cutting costs on their side and, and discussing fees with the, with the business community as well as the public and taking input on these fees, yes, I'd feel a lot more comfortable.
Yeah, that's another important point you brought up, because I think sometimes too often, just like in the old GRT argument, you remember that? You know, the argument was, oh, that's just a tax on business, it's not gonna affect people, which of course was absurd, because you increase the GRT, you literally affect everyone because the cost of everything goes up. And I don't wanna get into, did the prices go down when the GRT was removed or any of that silliness? It's just that, you know, these things do have a tendency to get passed on to people. They have tendency to get passed on to customers, and then they have tendency to get passed on to the general public. Like you yourself said, some of this is justified. And in some cases, maybe they might not be that easy to pass on depending upon the nature of the fee, so maybe it wouldn't be as, as general as, as like a tax increase which is more easily passed on to every customer. But I'm glad you brought up the fact that, you know, anytime you do something like this, you're not affecting the business community in quotation marks. To a certain extent, you're affecting the community, period. And sometimes you gotta suck it up and do it, because in some cases, some of these fees haven't been touched for almost my lifetime. I remember when Rev and Tax was here, there was a couple of fees they pulled out that they were established back in nineteen fifty and they're still at the nineteen fifty fee level, which is, you know, four years older than me, so. Like that fee for taxi dancing, I didn't even know we had such a thing. I know we had it after the war, but it's still there, apparently, but, or they didn't call it taxi dancing, I can't remember what they called it, but they had a fee for that, a license for that. So I think it's an important point to make that, that, you know, there's no distinction here when you do this kind of stuff between this community, that community, this community, that community, this interest, that interest. When we do things like this, it's gonna affect every interest, every part of the community. And, and we, I think, need to calm down and recognize that that's the case. And, and that doesn't mean we're not gonna do it. Doesn't mean that some of this stuff doesn't have to happen, but it means we need to be cognizant of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Forbes. Senator Campbell?
I'd just make, like to make a follow-up. You know, John, the question posed earlier by the speaker, and you, you made mention that I guess you would be able to stomach the increases better or more if you saw something from the government's side of things in terms of cuts. Can you further elaborate on that? Explain why, why, what is, what is this relationship?
I think that when you, when you look at increasing fees first, it's like us increasing our rates as a business. We have to remain competitive. The government basically doesn't. They can increase the fees and they're the only game in town. But as a business, we need to remain competitive. So we're not just gonna raise fees because our costs are higher, we're gonna try and cut our costs first. And we have to look in-house, you know, maybe it's hiring better qualified employees and using less of them and getting more done with less. You know, we have to pay more for the people who could do more, and we just have to stay efficient. So we would like to see, as a business, I'd like to see them operate the government more efficiently and look at, treat themselves as a business entity. I know they're government entity, but they have to look at cutting costs in-house as well as, you know, they're gonna have to raise some of the fees, I understand that. But they have to look in-house first and look to cut as much as possible prior to just coming up with, some of these fees in here are eleven hundred percent increases. To me, that's unreasonable. We've gotta look at what the market can bear. We just can't automatically increase eleven hundred percent, regardless if the fees were first established in nineteen fifty-two. I think fees should... I think fees should come on on a gradual basis, so the, so consumers can absorb that and businesses can absorb it. But to go, to come in with an eleven hundred percent increase in some of these fees, I, I just don't feel it's warranted, especially when there's been no, uh, public input.
Yeah, but I'm going back again to the question again, and again, there was this converse relationship between, uh, being able to handle the increase in, in, in the services, the, the cost of these government services provided to you, as well as then the converse relationship of the reduction in, in spending with the government. And, and I, I, again, I don't wanna make assumptions on that. It's more of a shared, is that more of a shared pain?
Uh, no, it's, it, I'm not, I'm not sure what you're addressing, but all I'm saying is that although we need to increase some of the fees, we also have to look at cutting some of our costs.
Sure.
And just being more efficient as a government.
Yeah. Yeah, and obviously, and I understand, by the way, you know, um, the, 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 the issue of, of the bills in hand at this point, again, what has been presented to us, uh, we have a situation, a scenario with all the fees that have, that have been, uh, proposed by the administration, uh, to the legislative body, as well as, of course, the, the raising or the lowering of the ceiling of the Dave Santos, uh, Act, based on the calculations, uh, provided by the administration, you're going to look, uh, the net effect to the government of Guam revenues between the implementation, which should be May first, and the end of the fiscal year, which is September thirtieth, is a little bit about, around, a little bit over six million dollars in increase to the revenues to the government of Guam. Now, of course, the more difficult issues lie ahead with this, as we, as we move along in this bill, um, and I'm, that's why I'm, I just wanna relay this infor- information to you to see how also difficult it will be as we move along. The, um, if these fee proposals are ratified at this amount at this time, no changes, and, and again, based on the imbalance and the current government spending that is, uh, that how government is tracking at this point, uh, we are still in an imbalance of about, uh, over twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five million dollars. Now, what is going to occur over the next few days is that, obviously, there has been a deappropriation of all government budgets based on non-compliance, at, at least in those entities where there has been non-compliance towards, uh, reporting requirements. So, um, by statute, what is going to occur is there will be a deappropriation of close to twenty million dollars. So with that, there is, whether, whatever occurs, uh, whether there's been a ratification of these new fee proposals or not, there will be a cut in government's base, uh, spending based on the law. The tough issue affecting this legislative body, uh, is that even with tho- with that twenty million dollar cut in, um, in spending by the government, there will be, there will still be an imbalance of, of, again, close to four to five million dollars. So again, the issue at, at this, this legislature at this point is that, um, is that there will, there will be an impact to the community, uh, and the government as a result, um, of, of these fee structures, but even with that, uh, and this is where I'm, you, you know, the, the quest, or the statement you made earlier in regards to, um, that government has to, has to show also, uh, uh, motivation to make cuts, those cuts are gonna occur. And of course, uh, the issue of the body at, at this time, of course, and working with the administration, is that when these cuts do occur, um, ensuring that we still provide, uh, services and, and hopefully at, at no worse equality and, and there is no major disruption in, in government services that are provided to the community. Uh, but again, I just wanted to, to get an idea of what was driving you when you, when you made that particular comment.
If you ask small, uh, most small businesses and maybe even some private big, big businesses, cutting five percent is really nothing. I think you should cut more. If, if, if five percent cuts twenty million and you need six more million, try cutting six and a half percent and you should be there without increasing any fees. Having said that, I still think that some fees need to be increased, but I think that the government needs to cut more. I mean, like I said, five percent, that's nothing. I mean, for a private business, if you told them they have to cut five percent, they'll find that easily and cut it. So I think the government should be able to do the same.
Thank you very much, John.
Thank you, Senator Calvo. Thank you, Mr. Lintiaco. Ms. Duennius?
Hi, I'm Liz Duennius, and, um, I'm a associate broker at Remax Diamond Realty, but I'm not here for Remax Diamond Realty, I'm here for myself, I'm here for my children and for my grandchildren and for my customers and clients that I represent. Uh, basically, um, the government is in dire straits. Um, I've seen so many things happen right now that, you know, gets passed on to the local consumer. One day, I was showing this woman around and she, she said, "My dad gave me property, but now I have to go buy something because the government tells me I have to spend thirty thousand to get my house hooked up to water," and this is through the Guam Water Works. And, you know, some of the problems that I see with the government is, is, the government's responsible for it, there's solutions to the problem, but you, everything keeps getting passed on to us, and I just feel like it's not fair. Um, you're here for the good of all, the government is here for the good of all, but is it servicing the good of all? I, there's some disparity in the way things are being run right now, and even in looking at, uh, the bill, I mean, this Bill Seventy-four, there's some things here that, I mean, I understand that an increase is needed, because the government needs it, but just like John in the private sector, we used to have eighty employees at Duennius Peralion Associates. Now we're, and, and when times got rough, we cut down to forty, we cut down half, and we had to survive, and times were rough, but we managed and we're still here. And the government, it's a little different with the government. It, it doesn't matter whether it's rough or not, you, you guys still keep plugging. We have to cut where we, we need to cut. The government, on the other hand, is a different story. So it doesn't feel right when we keep getting taxed to do stuff, to pay extra for different things, when we don't see it happening, and I think everyone I've heard on this table have made the same statement. So, I mean, we, you know, in the private sector, we talk a lot about the government, but I think we're trying to make that difference by making our statements heard to help not just ourselves, but for Tanwan or Tun Maria down the road. Yeah, it's so easy to say Tunwan and Tun Maria, but baloney, let's get something done. You know, enough of the rhetoric and the political jockeying for positions. I think it's embarrassing what I witnessed earlier. I'm really sad, it really hurts, because I think we're all here for the good of all, not for ourselves. Anyway, on, uh, some of the things, um, I had spoke to some other individuals, I mean, for example, the recording fees, uh, for, if one fee was like two hundred dollars, it's now gonna be a thousand dollars for a recording fee. It's also stating in here that if I'm a seller and I sell ten properties, I have to pay a fee for the sale of each property. If I'm a landlord, I have to pay an annual fee to get a license to, uh, rent a piece of property out, and on top of it, if it's, uh, two, three houses, I have to pay an additional fee, or if it's a, uh, apartment building, I have to pay another, if I have twenty units in that building, I have to pay an additional fee per, per unit. Um, over the, over the past year or two, there have been a lot of investors that have come to Guam, and they already bought a lot of property. What it did was raise prices, so if my son or my daughter wanted to buy a piece of property, already their prices have increased. So they're competing with an off-island buyer who has strength in their money, because they're coming from higher market areas, and they're looking at Guam as, as a bargain. So if my son wanted to buy something, I mean, he has to pay a thousand dollars on top of what he's paying now for a closing fee. Um, so it's, it's, it's hitting the local people, you know, hitting my children and eventually my grandchildren and everyone else out there. They have to pay extra above and beyond what they normally would pay for a recording fee. It's bad enough right now, the average, right now, out on the market to buy a home, you can't, at one time, you could buy a home for a hundred and forty-five thousand for twelve hundred square feet, now you're looking at two hundred, two, above two hundred thousand to buy a regular home, and it's tough already out there for the local market. But island invest, off-island investors are looking at it as an opportunity, which I think is great, but there's just, the balance for the local community is, is gonna be tougher. So they're the ones getting hit. You know, the off-island investors, it's the price to pay, they're gonna have to pay it regardless, but for the local community, they're the ones really hit. There are challenges, we just have to, you know, I think the government should take the challenge, get some private input to help clean up, because it, bottom line is, it's gonna have to done, be done. We're all gonna pay, each one of us will have to pay. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Duennius. Senator Calvo?
Ms. Duennius, you know, again, the recording fee, what, what basically is entailed in the recording process?
It's just taking your document that say, "I, Liz Duennius, own this property." You take it to land management, they stamp it, you know, they record it so that later, if I sell it again, they will have a record to show who the ownership is. In fact, even on the documents, there's, if I want a warranty deed, there is a, a fee, there's also a fee for a warranty deed. Again, I understand that increases have to be made, but like I said, two hundred to a thousand dollars, that's a big jump, and not just that, I think it's reflective in all, some of the other fees from what I'm hearing with the others.
Again, on, on, on that particular recording, the, uh, do you have any knowledge of, let's say, the state of Hawaii, what, if, if in any?
I'd have to research what they're doing.
Okay.
But I mean, for what we're doing now, I mean, we're talking Guam here, economy has a higher econ, you know, they're buying homes in the, an average home in Hawaii is five hundred thousand.
Yeah.
We're at a lower scale here.
I wanna just ask that question, because again, going back to the driver's license, I do recall when, when there was some discussions earlier this week with the driver's license, uh, in some commu- uh, I think the state of Washington, that was brought up in the session where, uh, for, um, for a five-year license, it was forty, uh, I think forty-five dollars. And so, you know, there's some areas where there might be some equity or, or some, where, where the rates charged in Guam with these proposed fees are kind of in line on what you may see in other stateside communities. I just had no idea what, what it may be, uh, for a community, whether it's in Hawaii or, or states.
You know, one thing I noticed in here is, it's like-
Confederatory United States.
Like even Pachinko machines, some of these places, these, uh, game rooms, they're open twenty-four hours, and you know they're making big bucks, they're in there feeding those machines, and there's some payoffs there, and, um, they're, they're, the rate that they're paying is, I mean, it's kinda looking at where the areas that you can tax to raise, and then there's some areas, so it's kind of like leveling the playing field, finding where areas that aren't being taxed properly and tax those to balance things out.
Okay, I wanna thank, thank you very much, Ms. Duennius.
Thank you, Senator Calvo. Uh, Mr. Cruz, thank you for being patient.
Well, I'm Johnny Come Lately. I was informed that there's something going on at the legislature, so I hightailed it down here. One of the things is, who in his right mind, Oahu smart he is, can look at this bunch of papers and know what's inside? I have attended a lot of public hearings, and, uh, like John says, I'm in this practically same business with John Lintiaco, except I do a little bit more. I'm the guy who makes the hard things that are almost impossible, possible. I lift the heavy things and I move the mountains, but, um, I, I was watching, I was watching how the government operates. Now that they have floundered all their money, they wanted to come out and recapture some. But what they do is, instead of finding their mistakes or trying to find out how to do it, they go out, they start hitting the first person around and picking on their pockets. Isn't that right? Uh, let's take, for example, up at, uh, Revenue and Tax or up there, uh, there used to be, and I remember way back, there used to be license for, or registration for any piece of equipment that comes on this island, one-time shot, even trailers. But tell me, how many of those are paying now? What happened? It's not in their, this here document? They, they go out and, and they, they went to sleep, they must have been drunk, and they got into a dream, and they say, "Let's charge this, let's charge that, let's charge that." But who are they doing it for? Who, hey, you gotta, you gotta think of the public, Joe Public. That's why in the first place, there should be a public hearing on this bill. No, no question about how, when, or where, were you, we, was it very important? Do you have to do it right away? You gotta find out what effect does it do to the people when you raise these rates? Let me, let me give you one example, um, I was just glancing over, but this gun registration. When they had the gun registration, they're very strict, even up till now, but they issue it, uh, uh, every year, but then later they found out that's not the way to do it, so they issued it permanent. Lo and behold, ten years down the line, somebody got a bug up their butt and he says, "Oh, no, let's, let's put it down temporary again." Then they found out that it's not right, so they put it back to permanent. Now they're gonna take it down to tempor- uh, every year. Now, once you license something like that, it stays on the record, and you only look for it when something happens. Why do you have to keep charging the people every year? Now, what bothers me here is, is a lot of things, I, I used to be in a committee where, like on transportation, when they used to make laws, or we used to say, uh, they used to push the trucking people around. I'm one of the biggest truckings, well back, and, uh, equipment company, but I always come to this public hearing, I always, uh, expressed my view, I was even appointed as committees on, on, on these trucks. Now I wonder what's happening? None of those guys ever come to me and say, "Hey, Ed, uh, is this the way it's done? The only reason why even this public hearing, I found out, or is it a public hearing?" Somebody called me, says, "Ed, you better get down there." Now, those things have to be straightened out. They have to be, where they, they tap the public, uh, business people, uh, and find out actually, what is their sentiments about it, or whether it's legitimate for them to charge. Uh, you, at one time, I remember you, they used to charge wholesale and retail, they tax it, then they say, "Okay, we won't tax the wholesaler now, because the retailer's bringing in the money." Fine, same as gasoline. But one thing that bothers me now, and I, I'm gonna cut it short, but one thing that bothers me now, and I'm gonna tell you. Uh, I voted for fifteen senators, okay? And they're supposed to be reputable people. I can think about it going down and squawking about things that are not done right, but today I have been insulted very much, because there was eight here listening to this so-called public hearing, and then there were three. Why? Don't you people, uh, do you people getting paid, or are you forlorn, or what? Correct that, please. I mean, I want you people to start your homework, do your homework first, then you go out to the public and say, "I'm gonna sell you this, or is this right, or is this wrong?" I am ashamed of the hearing that you have now. I'll be hon- you, Ed, you know me, your parents know me, and I think every senator here knows who I am, but this is the only time ever I come to a public hearing and I see people started the public hearing, then they all kinda got up, they argued like bunches of little kids with marbles, or the mango that fell off across the street. Please, I want you people, uh, to conduct this thing in a little better manner, even like the old times way back when your grandfather was a, a senator. We have respect, we had the public invited, they come out and get our informa- uh, information. This thing here is done so poorly, like John Lintiaco said, some of them should have been let- Limpiaco said, some of them should have been a lot higher, and some of them is outrageous. They do, I'll say this, they do not know what they're doing. So in closing, I'm going to say, please, when you call another public hearing, and this bill should have a public hearing before you do anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Senator Calvo?
Thank you very much. And, Mr. Cruz, your comments are well taken. Again, there are many times I've met with you, not only here, maybe, and you would be visiting the office, but also in, in public areas, and whether it's in a party or in a funeral. I can tell you, this has been a unique situation. It's not every time that you have a bill presented to you on revising a budget halfway through the fiscal year. And with it, with an emergency situation as stipulated by the administration, that we have the credit agencies watching over every action taken by the government of Guam. I appreciate, again, your sentiment. Again, I've tried to conduct the hearings as responsible, and as, as much at an even decorum as possible. And by and large, most of the senators have shown that decorum. But again, it's obvious, we are in very, how would you say, interesting times. And with those interesting times, there is, responsibilities have been put forth to this legislature. And with those responsibilities, the weight of the actions of the body. And with that, that was why, one of the reasons why, again, some folks really wanted to have an opportunity to speak to the legislative body, and I allowed that opportunity. There are many things that have occurred, not only in this budget session, but in prior budget sessions, where amendments or provisions were added on that were significant in their impact without a public hearing. And again, I want to thank you for your presence here today. I'm going to say also, it doesn't make our jobs any easier, because obviously, with the sentiments of all of you, every one of these proposed fees, increases, or changes in the ceilings of taxes, is going to have an impact on you either individually, or to your business, or to someone you know. As we deliberate over the next several days, there's also going to be the issues that are going to affect, that we're going to have to address here. Because whether we rat, you know, whether we ratify these increases in revenues, or we don't, and again, and I want to reiterate, even if we were to ratify it, there is some major reductions that will have to occur in government spending to ensure a balanced budget. And I guess what's going to have to happen, whatever, whatever actions this body takes, and this bill has evolved. If the original bill that came to this body, there was only one revenue generating option, and that was the gross receipts tax increase. There was an imbalance in the bill, and obviously, there already was more spending authority over revenues. So this body has had to deal with that. Obviously, we did not want to see an increase in the GRT. And then, of course, the administration brought forward other proposals that they were to bring in two thousand eight, proposed budget, but they brought forward in this particular bill. And we've also had to make some very strict policy changes. There's some very tough amendment here, amendments in this particular bill that will build accountability. Mr. Cruz, some of the things that you're so frustrated about, some of the additions to this bill will mean that if a director does not do his or her job in regards to reporting to his bosses, and those bosses are the people of Guam, the governor, or the legislative body, they will be subject to an automatic cut in pay. Sir, there is some, there are some major amendments that have been placed on this particular bill. But in the end of all this, in the next few days, we're going to be voting for a bill. And some of those portions of the bill are not going to be liked, and whether it's in a partial or full movement in increases in fees, or cuts in government spending. These are very unique times. I want to, I want to thank you for the input that you placed, at least to this body. And again, sir, when I, when I see you in whatever event here in this small little island of ours, I'm going to, I'm going to hold you with a lot of respect, and hopefully, for whatever actions I've done, you understand, you know, the reasons why it's been done. And anyway, I just want to, again, thank you for your, for your input. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker Calvo. Speaker Pangolino?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I just listened, of course, to all the input from the different individuals, was able to hear what they had to say. And I think the overwhelming response was, you know, this is, this bill in its present form is not ready for passage, that there really has been a true lack of public input. And at the risk of being ruled out of order, I'm going to move again that we refer the bill back to committee for the purpose of receiving additional public input on this.
Speaker Forbes on the motion?
I agree that there should be more public input. I don't think it's necessary to remove, move the bill back to, back to a public hearing. I think the correct interpretation of the rule makes it clear that there's nothing wrong with having people come in and testify in committee of the whole. I want to stress that, committee of the whole, to receive testimony. But I would agree that there is more public input that would be necessary. So I would like to ask the chair, maybe you can pass it on to the other chair, that we extend an invitation to other individuals who may wish to testify on this, and I don't mean just members of the business community. The Pacific Daily News and the other media in their reporting have received input from people on the street, from, you know, concerned citizens who have expressed their opinion about these fees, and other things of that nature. And I would personally, this is just me talking, be happy to hear testimony from anybody who wishes to give it. If our good friend, the president of the GFT wishes to come and provide testimony, I'd love to hear it. If any folks who feel that they have something to say about this particular series of fee increases wishes to come and give testimony, I'd love to hear that, too. I just don't think it's necessary for us to go to the extent of referring the bill back to committee. And I'm going to, I'm going to fall back again, you know. What we're doing here today is not unprecedented, folks. You know, those of us who were here in the last legislature on both sides of the aisle remember taking testimony from members of the general public, both in favor and against, in committee of the whole, when we were on the bill. The increase in, in the minimum wage. And there were people from the public who came and testified against it, and people from the public who came and testified in favor of it. And we listened to both sides. And notwithstanding the fact that I have an admiration for the folks up there who are testifying today, I voted for the increase in the minimum wage, based on my own beliefs and, you know, the situation that presented it to us, and the testimony that we received. And I don't know why this has become such an issue, because it's not unprecedented for the legislature to do this. It's done it in practically every legislature I've ever been in. And since I go back to the twenty-third, I've been in quite a few. And I don't recall committee of the whole ever being prevented from taking testimony from people. And I do think that, you know, once you start going down that road, it's a dangerous road, when you selectively say, you know, "This is valid testimony because it comes from a Gov. Guam department." This is invalid testimony because it comes from people that aren't in the government of Guam department. You know, that, that this director can testify and advocate and give his position, and this person can't. I just don't think that's a road we want to go down. And I, I realize some of us are getting tired. I know I am. You know, it's been a long, grueling process here. And, you know, we didn't entirely bring ourselves to this point. We didn't, we didn't write this bill, and we didn't introduce this bill. But it is ours now to deal with, and I don't think it hurts us to listen to people, ever. Whatever we're going to do. I mean, I hope you guys, Steve, I hope you're not upset about the line of questioning I asked about, you know, and I hope, you know, Mary, you're not mad about my saying, "What? You don't want to pay any fee?" Because I'm not trying to challenge you. I'm trying to, I'm trying to bring out what your position is. And I'll be honest with you personally, I think you should pay some fee. I'm sorry, but I do. For you to tell me, or for anybody to tell me that, in this case, there shouldn't be any fee at all, I think that's not a position I personally could advocate. And I understand that you're making it. That's part of the exchange, you know. And I know everybody got a little bit upset earlier, and, you know, to the extent that I contributed to that, I apologize. But I just think it's necessary. I don't think that those who feel that perhaps we're, we need to look at this a little bit more carefully are wrong. That's why, Mr. Limpiaco, when you made the suggestion that, in your, in your view, some of these issues with respect to the fees, that insufficient justification on some of them has been presented, although you do believe, I did listen to your testimony carefully, that there are fees that need to be increased, you think some of them need to be better justified?
Are we speaking on my motion?
Yeah. I do think that, that we need to afford you the opportunity. So as I suggested earlier, Mr. Chair, you know, after we dispose of this motion, I think it would be a good idea to try and get Rev and Tax together with some of these folks, so they can discuss this, and they can have the same kind of sharing of opinions, and meeting of the minds, to the extent minds can meet, on this issue. In summary, I personally would not be averse to continuing this process. Tomorrow, we have Student Government Day, and I can think of no better thing for those representatives of the individual senators to engage in, other than the process of public input, which is at the root of the legislative process. So that's what I'd personally like to see. It's up, it's up to the body to determine-
So can we have a public hearing then?
Very nice. I think we can have a public hearing in the committee of the whole, like we do all the time, in every legislature I've been in, from the twenty-third, to the twenty-fourth, to the twenty-fifth, to the twenty-sixth, to the twenty-seventh, to the twenty-eighth, to the twenty-ninth.
Can we have a public hearing then? Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Forbes. On the motion?
Yes, let's go ahead and take a vote on the motion. I'm, I'm sorry, Senator Pangolino, could you just restate your motion, please?
My motion is to direct the committee on, the committee to hold a public hearing on this bill.
I'm sorry, but I would be willing to play the tape back. The motion, as stated originally, was to refer Bill seventy-four back to the committee, which is a very specific-
That was the original motion.
That's the motion you made, right before I spoke. So if you're-
Okay, then I'll make that motion.
You stating the motion differently, or?
The motion will be to refer the bill back to committee as a whole, so we can hold a public hearing.
No, back to the original committee, is what you said.
Back to the original, I'm sorry, back to the committee.
It isn't the committee of the whole now. I object to that because I believe we can continue in the committee of the whole.
Good. Can we just get a vote?
Okay, so the motion is to refer the bill-
The bill back to the committee on finance and taxation, basically, for the purpose of holding additional public hearings.
Okay, on the motion? Those in favor?
No.
Oh. We're voting right, yeah. We're voting right now. Senator Shimizu?
I did call for the votes, Senator Shimizu.
We called, we called for the vote. Yes, sir. We called for the vote. We called for the vote, yes. And I just needed a clarification from the mover of the motion, for his motion. But we are calling for, and so discussion on the motion is no longer acceptable. On Senator Pangolino's motion, right, to refer Bill seventy, seventy-four back to the Finance Committee. Are there objections? There was an objection, so we'll take a vote on that motion. One, two, three, four, five, six, the motion fails. At this point in time, I'd like to thank our, our guests up here for your input, and I would like to, that you know that we, we have taken all that you said into considerations, and we will take into consideration in the days to come. I thank you. At this point in time, we'll take a one-minute recess.
This committee will take a recess until ten o'clock tomorrow morning. And of course, this committee will also is requesting, if, if there is anyone within this community that is wishing to speak out on the matter of these fees, this committee will allow for that opportunity from the public. And that's how we will start out with the session tomorrow morning. So we are going to recess until ten o'clock tomorrow morning.